Hopefully, my voice will last through the night. It's been with a cold here, but I'll call this regular meeting of the Virgin City Council to order February 26 at 5:30. Would everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few adjustments to the agenda. Dexter LaFavor will be moved up into the visitors' slot. Item 6B is not occurring. There will be an item 6C, which is just the city council calendar. Not any action on it. And 6D, report of the basin task force. So with that, I need a motion to approve the minutes of February 12.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Okay. Are there any changes to the minutes?
I had a couple of comments. Page two, the first paragraph, slightly more than halfway down. They were looking for guidance from the city council. City manager Chabot advised the objective of McDonough Pump Station is to work at 100% and to do so will require a lagoon oversized. It's not terribly clear to me what that is supposed to be saying.
Yeah, the intent is that the lagoon may need to...
The size of the lagoon may need to be increased.
Increased. Then in the next section, 22A Truck Safety, 9:00 AM should be changed to 6:00 PM. And then the only other item I had was the insertion of a colon that's in 615 under adjournment.
Okay. Anybody else have some? I have a couple. All right, and we're back into the Truck Safety Committee update. Let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 line down. It starts with Deputy Mayor Fritz advised that they are checking into angle parking on, it should say, Main Street from Green instead of Greet.
Right.
Street. And then at the end of that paragraph, I think it would be better to say, it says, "not be compatible with a bike path." I think bike lane would be more appropriate. And that is it. So if there are no other changes, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. So the next on the agenda is Dexter LaFavor. It's your show.
All right. Thank you. I am Dexter LaFavor. I work for TATA and Howard. We're an engineering firm that appreciates just being selected to do the wastewater studies for the city. And I was going to just give a brief overview of the work that we were doing.
Great.
So the study is divided into two major sections. The first one is going to look at the collection system. And the second section will look at the wastewater treatment facility. We'll look at those separately. But they do, the needs of both relate to the other. So with respect to the collection system, we're going to do what's called an infiltration and inflow study, an II study. It's the common terminology for that. And we're going to start by doing continuous flow monitoring within the system at different points in the system. We're going to divide the system up into about five sections. And we're going to measure the flow in the sewers for each of those five seconds, five sections, for a six-week period. We plan to start that mid-March. So if we do start mid-March, the six weeks will end the end of April. The reason we do it this time of year is we want to do it when groundwater levels are high to adequately identify the infiltration. Infiltration being the water that leaks into the sewers. Water distribution systems have leakage out, sewer systems have leakage in. The other reason that we run for a six-week period is that we want to capture some rainstorms. Good time of year for that. Usually it rains sometime during six weeks, anytime in Vermont, but, you know, April should be choice. With that, we look for the inflow. The rain events cause the inflow. That's catch basins, roof drains that are connected to sanitary sewers. Those cause severe peak flows in the system and frequently the causes of overflows. The other thing I wanted to mention is that just our preliminary review of data suggests that there may be some kind of connection between the high flows at the treatment plant and high levels in the river, in the Otter Creek. So we'll be monitoring river level and flow during the study as well. We also will install groundwater monitors to measure the water level, groundwater levels during the study. And that will allow us to calibrate our data to different times of year as water levels, groundwater levels vary. We'll also be monitoring precipitation during the study period. There's an existing pre-gauge that the treatment plant's been using to report on CSOs as they relate to rain events. So we're going to use that existing pre-gauge for that. I did want to mention that, you know, some of this work with the collection system is directly related to the overflow problem at McDonough. So we're going to, the main purpose of the study as it relates to McDonough is to identify the source of the extraneous flows that cause that overflow. We also had a, the 1272 order issued by the state with regard to the CSOs had a deadline of January 31 to submit the annual report for last year. We have submitted that report. They want us to go back and do some more analysis of the data from, I think it's 2016 and 17. It might be 15, 16, and 17, but we've received that data from Rick at the treatment plant. And we'll be doing that analysis and responding to the state on that. The next deadline is for a long-term control plan to be submitted by October. The preparation of that long-term control plan is not a part of our scope. We don't feel we're going to have enough data based on our six weeks of analysis to really develop a comprehensive control plan. Some of the next steps in the work will be to go in and, it's called a sewer system evaluation survey, where this work will identify priority areas. Like I said, we're going to divide it into five subsections. We'll identify the subsections that have the highest degree of problems. And then we'll go in, depending on the type of problems we detect with the flow metering, will dictate the type of investigative measures that we take to try and identify those problems. Specifically, if we're looking for a catch basin, we may be able to find it just by visually looking for them and identifying. If it's a roof drain, sometimes we need to do what's called smoke testing, where they put smoke in the sewers. And you see the smoke come up out of the gutter in the building, and you know you've got a connected roof drain. So that's the type of work that would be in a subsequent phase that would be necessary to really identify what it's going to take to fix the collection system. So that's just unlikely to be done by October. A lot of that, you know, some of that work is best done in the springtime when groundwater levels are high. So it'd be spring of 2020 would be the next opportunity to do some of that monitoring. So that's the collection system half of it. And then with the wastewater treatment facility, we're going to start with a, we already gathered some of the plans and are quite familiar with the plant, how it's configured, but we're going to go through and we're going to do an inspection of the facility from beginning to end, identify all the components, look at what they're supposed to do, look at their condition, document all that, and see if the plant is set up to do what it needs to do for the present and foreseeable future. We know they've got some mechanical problems down there with some equipment that isn't doing what it needs to do and some that's just really old, needs to be replaced. So we go through and identify all those issues as they exist, and then we look at alternative ways to try to resolve them moving forward. Fossils removal obviously is a key, being in the Lake Champlain Basin, and trying to deal with the extraneous waters. You know, the high flows to the plant don't affect the plant, the treatment, too much because pretty much it's clean water in, clean water out. But the hydraulics do have a cost associated with it. Pumping the water is a cost. So if the decision is made down the road to either treat or remove the extraneous water that's coming into the system, that will determine how big of a plant we need. And if we do decide to treat all that II, it'll have serious implications on the size of the plant. Yep, yep. Mostly hydraulic, not biological or chemical needs as much. So that's a quick overview.
Counsel, have any questions?
Second phase isn't going to be able to happen until next spring, but the plan is due to the state in the fall. Do we ask the state for an extension?
We've already asked.
Okay.
And they said, wait till June, when you know the outcome of the study. We don't think we'll have data enough to be conclusive, but if we do, we will be able to prepare.
Historically, the state usually says, okay, we'll wait since you're making good faith effort.
Yes. Yep, yep. It goes a long way. And the state is very interested in Virgin's correcting existing conditions. So I think they're going to, they say they're going to be supportive and really excited about the project, just as we are.
Any questions? No?
Yes. Just, I guess, just, I'm not sure how much you're aware of some work that's already been done, but Stone Environmental did an IDE study probably two, three years ago that's available from the state. That might be helpful in terms of identifying cross-connections that are made in the sewer.
Okay.
And then in terms of groundwater flow, is there any benefit in having a portion of that study done during drier times? I mean, there's a lot of groundwater here in Virgin's, and it seems like if you waited or at least hadn't had a snippet of data gathered during the drier months, that might lend some more support to areas that are getting a lot of inflow.
Well, we'll look at year-round flow data measured at the treatment plant, and we will look at that. But the purpose of this study is to identify sources of infiltration, and they are potentially all present when groundwater levels are the highest. When groundwater levels are low, they start to disappear, and we wouldn't be able to identify them under dry conditions, so.
Right.
That's why it's done in the spring.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Appreciate it.
Okay. I did the minutes before I did the visitors, didn't I? I'm out of order.
You're out of order.
Any citizen comments, since we only have one citizen out there?
So did your partners correct that Mike and Shannon are not on the agenda tonight? They decided to postpone?
Correct.
Was there something that they were, were they waiting on information, or is that why they decided not to?
So when they joined us in the last meeting, Brent, they, we were discussing two different grant opportunities, and some of the requirements of those grant opportunities had shifted. And the ERP grant is not eligible for the stormwater mitigation. I guess Mike had spoken to somebody regarding that. And the second grant opportunity, which is the state revolving loan fund, we just haven't done any work in the last, you know, week to be able to run that one down, so.
You didn't know if something got changed or abandoned?
No.
So they're planning to come at some other later?
Yeah, they're just trying to find the right funding source for us.
Okay.
I'm good. You're all set?
Okay. Thank you. All right. So we move into business, and we, that one. And so you have in front of you the city council calendar for the next year. So no action on it this evening, but look it over. I'm trying to remember. Traditionally, it's been where, you know, if you've got a vacation planned or other things that are coming up, if we kind of know that, because there may be other members that are going to have to be out at the same time, and we might shift around meeting dates in order to accommodate everybody. So just let Matt know whether you have any problems with any of those dates. I don't have any problems with any of those dates.
I gather so much. Thank you, Reni.
During the process of trying to find the city manager, though, we were told from the state that we can participate even though we're not here by Skype or phone or something.
Yes, you can.
So that's my plan for March and April.
Yeah, you can do that. There, in the law, actually, it lays down fairly specifically how that has to be done. There has to be an ability for the public to hear you and for you to respond. And I forgot what other requirement, but it's in the open meeting law specifically. But yeah, that's a good way to participate. All right. We'll go to item 6D, report of the basin task force. David?
Thanks. So we had our first organizational meeting on the 19th. Just to recap for everybody, folks that are on the committee with me, are Mike Winslow, Tim Cowan, Tim Cook, Jill Strobe, Bill Benton, and Kathy Ross here. At that meeting, we elected a chair, which is myself, and a secretary, Mike Winslow. So, and I'm not a fan of big meetings, long meetings, so we kept it to an hour. Everybody seemed happy with that. So I'll tell you what we discussed. We had some general discussion relative to some of the big issues that everybody's aware of relative to the basin. I mean, number one is obviously the connectivity or a lack thereof. And everybody understands that it's going to be some time between when we identify what we'd like to do and what we're able to do because it involves the bridge. So, but on an interim basis, what we're going to be doing is, and hopefully at our next meeting, which is the 21st at 6:30, and it'll be in Matt's office, planning on hopefully at that point, taking the opportunity to walk around down there and identify some of the work that needs to be done this spring relative to cleanup. Also identifying some of the issues with the existing pathways down there, how they can be improved, what some of the impacts are relative to water levels. It's good both Tim and Bill are on the committee because they're right there. They see it every day. One of the, one of the main issues is that there is not a, there is not really a general understanding that you can walk along the bank of the river all the way from the staircase by Bill's house all the way to the dock. That's actually under our control there. And you walk over the, you walk over the little bridge over the brook, and you're looking at what is someone's backyard, essentially. So there's not a lot of, our feeling is, is that there's a lot of folks that don't understand that, you know, they can continue to walk through there. So we'd like to address that. Signage, coming up with signage. And a lot of this, a lot of this work has already been done, and it's part of the basin master plan. Everybody has a copy of that and asked everybody to refamiliarize themselves with that document. For our next meeting, I mean, one of the things that I tasked everybody with is I really wanted them to really understand what that document spells out for us and to think about how the basin should look, feel, and function, because everything should come down from that. And so what we're hopeful is, is once the weather starts to cooperate, organize a community workday down there, clean up the place, and keep things moving forward.
Sounds good to me. At your next meeting, if you could look in the plan for those parts of the plan that deal with downtown and traffic and pedestrian safety?
Yeah.
Because there's a section there, and the reason I ask about that is that if we have, the more committees that we have that are saying the same thing, that we need to do these things?
Exactly.
The easier it is for us to get money from V-Trans or to do a grant or whatever.
Yeah, and I think everybody understands that, and I'll certainly reiterate that. I mean, we are very fortunate. I attended the recreation committee meeting that Lynn is on, and Tim Cook is on that as well, so that, you know, I'm on the truck committee with Jeff, and so there's a lot of cross-pollination there. And I think that we are all on the same page relative to the issues that we face, and everybody has the commitment to do whatever we can do to address them.
Okay. Great, great. Any questions?
Should we be looking for some sort of resolutions from each of the committees speaking to that, Reni, so that we are all speaking with one voice? How else are you going to collate that information?
At some point, that that probably would be a good thing to do, is to kind of put everything, all the committees, you know, comments or supports or endorsements together into one place and saying that this is coming from all of these groups that have made these studies. That'll be your problem. So, yeah, I think that's a good idea. Okay. If we don't have any questions, we'll move on to item 7, city manager's report.
Thank you. Certainly a budget report. Couple of things that are jumping off the page due to us actually having a winter this year. Jim Laro, Department of Public Works. First off, you know, I have to credit this team for, you know, being out at all hours of the day and night in all sorts of weather, trying to stay on top of it. It's a, you know, it's a thankless job. And I am extremely appreciative of all the work that they have done this season. They've been extremely responsive to any comment or question that we have received in the city offices. And just a hats off to all of them. Unfortunately, you know, our equipment is taking a beating, you know, our, when I printed the report for the city council regarding maintenance materials, I had about enough money left to fill a salt shaker. We have overfilled that salt shaker now, so we're now over budget in our salt as well. There has been some information going around that there's a salt shortage. We're not anticipating, you know, knock on wood. There's a train headed out somewhere Jim told me this morning, and, you know, we've got dibs on that. So we're not anticipating having a problem, but there are communities that are going to run out of salt and are going to be switching over to sand here before the end of the season if things don't, if the weather does not abate. So you're seeing overages in, again, equipment maintenance, as I had communicated to the council previously. Both of our sidewalk plows broke down during that, the big storm two months ago, and we are now out of money in salt as well. It's nothing that is anybody's fault, it's just the nature of the beast right now. So that's kind of the low points on the budget. You know, I think I was feeling pretty good in December, but it only took February to wipe my optimism out on that. The song remains the same regarding both the police department expenses and revenue. I had a conversation with Alderman Koning this week, or the weekend, that this is something that is a near daily conversation between myself and Chief Merkel. We have a commitment from the chief that there will be no more expenditures. Vehicle maintenance is something that's going to continue to run over. I think we've been warned about that for several years. But we have to maintain the vehicles that we have. And aside from that, there's just no room in the budget for any expenditures. He's over on several line items, and I think he's going to take over by at least one more by the end of the season. So, and just to, Alderman Koning had asked specifically for clarification on where we were with body cameras. That had been a topic of conversation during our budget sessions last summer and up until August 28th had been a topic of conversation within the council. The procurement of the body cameras was contingent on, primarily on the police department staying on budget through May and June and seeing if there was any additional funding available. There will be no funding available this year. The other, there had been a comment passed by former city manager Holly that Chief Merkel would be looking at a VLCT passive grant opportunity that may come around, may have come around in January. If we were to be pursuing a grant opportunity, that money would probably be going towards computers at this point because, again, we have computers in vehicles that are seizing up and are not current. But most of those grant opportunities also require a 50% match, which we are not in position to produce. So that's just a recap of, I think, where we left it off today, Mark. Yeah, again, I think other categories, other departments are okay. And if we could just get a break with the weather for the next couple of months, I think we're going to be okay overall. I was asked by one of the council members, you know, where I saw the fund balance. Being at the end of the year, I have absolutely no idea. I can't even begin to predict it at this point. Again, I thought I had a, I was feeling good in December and not feeling great right now. So are there any questions from the council regarding the budget?
I'll just make a comment about the salt. Back a number of years ago, in Vermont and actually a few other states, there was a salt shortage, which also drove prices up. And we got together with Ferrisburg, Waltham, no, Ferrisburg and Panton, I think. And we rented a silage storage area, and we bought the salt off-season and stockpiled it so that we would have enough salt for the three towns to make it through the winter, and we also got it at a better price. So keep your ears open about what's maybe happening with the salt markets, because you might want to do that kind of thing again. It was really good to have the towns go together and buy it, but that also prevented us from running out of salt the next time, so.
Yeah, thank you. We're actually, Jim Laro and I are actually working with Brent Rukalski and Otter Creek Engineering on some grant opportunities for a new salt shed, because one of the problems we do have is capacity, Reni. And I know that there are other communities that would like to participate. And I know that there are other communities that would like to participate, you know, if we did go a larger shed, but we're somewhat landlocked in our location and don't want to be driving out of town to get our material. So, thank you on that. Bixby parking lot, so as we have had winter, people have been looking for available parking in downtown. I've been working with Masha Harris, who's the director at the Bixby, toward opening up the Bixby lot for resident parking during the parking ban. We, you know, we insure and maintain the lot and there's been a lot of dialogue between myself, Masha, and some members of the Bixby board as well as to, should that be available? My feeling and, and speaking with Jim Laro as far as, from a maintenance perspective is, you know, my feeling is yes, that should be available to city lot and we can work with the Bixby team to make sure that it is available during open hours of operation for the Bixby to make sure that their patrons have plenty of available parking. There was a bit of a, I'm going to call it a dust-up for lack of a better word, a miscommunication between Masha and I that led to an individual parking his car there longer than he should have been, but it actually generated good conversation between myself and the Bixby as to how to improve the communications and what steps we would need to take for the Bixby to be comfortable with us opening that up next winter. It will not be available for this winter's season, but it is, you know, 20 spots in the heart of downtown. It's a valuable portion of our inventory during our parking ban. Recap of meeting with the Ferrisburg Select Board on February 19th regarding police services. It's funny, I go back through and I look at agendas from last year, so, you know, I know what I'm supposed to be doing. Joan helps me, tells me what to do on a daily basis, but, and that's okay. You know, but this, this conversation actually took place with Ferrisburg almost at the same time last year, but it was somewhat different in that the pitch that had been made was to provide services at the same level that we currently provide here in Vergennes. And that was cost prohibitive to Ferrisburg. And frankly, I think when I was in the council, I was not in support of, you know, increasing staff to the level that would be required for us to be able to execute at, at that level. It did come to our attention that Ferrisburg's contract with the Addison County Sheriff's Department was up for renewal, so we did take an opportunity to go and speak to the Ferrisburg Select Board and state our case that due to proximity, we have an opportunity to be able to provide highway safety services at the same level that the Sheriff's Department is and maybe even an accelerated level. The Ferrisburg contract with the, with the Addison County Sheriff's Department is $15,000 and as I'm sure we are all aware, as our police department has grown, the budget has grown exponentially and I feel charged with A, attempting to maintain that budget and B, seeking alternative revenue services sources whenever I can find them. As George indicated in his presentation, since 2014, we've been out there for, you know, 457 different occasions and, you know, chief looks at that as, you know, you know, we're being neighborly. Obviously, if there's a call for help, we're going to respond. But it did, in addition to sparking a conversation regarding the sheriff's contract, it did call into question what the nature of that relationship is between us and Ferrisburg. I, I do not have an answer as to how to proceed on that at this time, but I do think it warrants further conversation between myself and the Ferrisburg Select Board with the support of our council. And is typical with issues such of this nature, it has also sparked a fair amount of social media conversation, I guess we'll call it, that was balanced, actually. There were individuals who felt quite passionately that Vergennes is not, does not belong in Ferrisburg and a fair amount saying that if, if, if Vergennes is in Ferrisburg, we should be, be being compensated for the support that, that we give them. So there'll be more coming on both of those topics. As you may have read in the paper, there's a new, new sheriff running the Sheriff's Department and Ferrisburg has not had an opportunity to be, to have met with him. So I'm sure we'll hear one, one way or the other back from Ferrisburg as to how they'd like to proceed. Any questions on any of that, folks? Okay, thank you. Thinking of spring, how about that? So Eat on the Green will return to the Vergennes Green on September 21st, 2019. Last year, the event was extremely successful as we just heard about Carnivale is getting traction. I think Eat on the Green is getting traction as well and Acorn, which is the bike touring company that joined the, Eat on the Green at the end of the event last year will be joining us again. They, I think they've done it to coincide, to, to coincide with being able to participate and join us for that event, so we look forward to that. And then I'm pleased to announce that we've been working with the Vergennes Farmers Market and for the upcoming season, they have decided to return the market back to the green. And I personally, just my own personal commentary, just always felt that it brought a animated, engaging event to the city green on a weekly basis. And I thank Bob and Lily for having hosted the market at Kennedy Brothers for the last couple of years, but I'm, I'm really pleased to have them back downtown. So that will start the week after school gets out in June, Thursday afternoons, the same timing, I think, is two to, two to six, off the top of my head, so there's that.
Will we be considering with them shutting off Park Street?
We absolutely will be considering. They, they had a couple of minor requests, Rennie, that seemed to have precipitated them leaving the green to begin with and nothing that I, that they've requested of me is egregious by any means. So a couple of things they've asked for, you know, is there somewhere that they can store their tents, you know, we can find accommodation for them and vendor parking has been a topic and that may be what Park Street gets, you know, cordoned off for specifically so they have the ability to, you know, unload, be there for the event and then, and load back in. But closing off Park Street is consistent with our best practices for larger events on the green, so that is on the table as well, absolutely.
Good, great. You have anything else?
That's it, three.
Okay, we'll get to mayor's report here. I have a few items that, if my voice again holds out, I'll try and get through. The first one is I went to a meeting, actually this meeting was in the Addison Independent also, regarding the Northern Border Regional Commission. And this commission covers the northern border with Canada from Maine, Vermont, New Hampshire, and New York. And the commission has had money, in the millions actually, to, to provide grants for infrastructure that would help economic development in particular in rural areas. But this year, the Vermont, it only covered the, the top six counties in Vermont before, but as of this year, it covers all of Vermont, is eligible to get these grants for infrastructure improvements. And I think Senator Leahy was the one who was the most responsible for, for getting that expansion of it and they have more money. And so I went there because I wanted to find out whether any of our projects like dealing with wastewater or stormwater would be eligible. And they are eligible, but I'm, I'm going to get to the caveat of it. How these grants go, they're, they're easier than the normal federal grant, but it's kind of split. It has where the, half of the grant is, is typical federal regulation, federal stuff that they want and then the other half of the grant is what the state wants. So if you looked at a grant for, applying for a grant in Maine, it would look different than the application for Vermont because Vermont could emphasize what Vermont wants to emphasize. And so in Vermont, the emphasis is on projects that will generate employment. And so that if there's a whole line of projects and one of them creates jobs, that goes, it gets bumped up in the, in the competition. These grants can go as high as a half a million dollars and if you're in the six original counties, that's an eight, it's an 80% grant and if you're in the rest of the state, it's a 50% grant. So, so for Addison County, it's 50%. So when I was at that meeting, I spoke with the deputy secretary of the Agency of Commerce and Community Development, Ted Brady, who I've known for many years, and I talked to him about projects to see whether we would be eligible for certain things. He did indicate that, that stormwater or wastewater projects would be eligible, but probably not very competitive because they don't create jobs. And so I asked him, well, what about if we did a project in the basin and replaced our docks with better docks and expanded the, the docks? Would that be eligible? He said it would be eligible and it probably would be competitive because it's generating commerce. And if, if we, if we emphasize the fact that with those docks and the number of boats that we have and the number of people that come into the basin and then spend their money downtown, that is an advantage. And also an advantage is that we're designated downtown and we get favorable consideration over other communities. So with that, while I'm going through all of this, is I just want the council to consider that as a possible project. We don't have numbers right now, but by March 29th, there has to be a letter of notification, letter of intent on a project that we or anybody else would like to have considered. And if the, if the, you know, if the council isn't, is at least somewhat in favor of that, then it would be worth some of the time. I would be, I would be doing it, but, but I'm going to be away. Matt would have to do some of that with the help of the partnership because with this grant, a grant like this, I think it's, it's something that the partnership could actually do for the city. And actually, these grants, the partnership itself as an entity is actually eligible to get the grant. The city is eligible, the partnership is eligible, and the state is eligible. I don't think the partnership should get the grant because obviously we're not going to provide the, the match money, but I think the partnership can write it, write the grant. So if the council think, we don't have a number to give you, for you to say anything now definitively as to how much that would cost, although I have had prior conversations with Jeff Provost from Doc Doctors about doing some sort of a doc project with us and he's very interested. So if it seems like it's something that you're interested in, then we can at least pursue it to get numbers, to put in the letter of intent. The actual grant is not, the deadline for the grant is May 10th. I'll be back before then from Florida and, and I would have no problem with working on that grant on behalf of the city and, and the partnership. But I think it's, it could be a worthwhile project and, you know, if you've been down to the basin and looked at our docks, they, they really need work. And there's some issue about the safety of them actually because they are tippy and old. And so at some point, we're going to have to do something with those docks anyhow and this may be an opportunity to get at least half of it funded. So I'd like you to consider that. I won't be around to get your answers, but I think it's something worth pursuing.
Rennie, what was the? Maybe give it a little more detail about what was the response when you ran the, the sewer project up the flagpole?
Oh, you mean from, from the agency?
Yeah.
It's eligible.
Okay. I, I, this is where I'm going with this. I mean, you know, and, and I, I like the project with the docks, but if we're doing, if we're creating an enhancement in that basin, okay, I'm trying to figure out a way to wrap everything together because there's, you know, it's a global issue and certainly the situation with the sewer plant and the sewer issue and the overflows has a negative impact there. So if, if we're doing something that's going to increase use and increase commerce, maybe there's a way to fold all of that in there to make that a piece of it and leverage more funds. Because there's certainly an impact there relative to the situation being the way that it is. I mean, that's one of the things that, you know, our, our committee will talk about.
Mm-hmm. Well, the other thing to consider too is that these grants occur every year.
Sure.
So, I mean, it's, you don't necessarily have to apply for them this year, you could apply for next year and just spend more time in, in developing what a project may be. They are, I mean, a lot of communities do apply. It is competitive, but it's also, as I said, it's an easier than normal federal grants and I've written a number of federal grants, so I know what they're like.
I'd say if the money's on the table now, probably a good idea to have on it.
Yeah, we won't convene again until the 26th, three days before.
Yeah.
The deadline, so you need a decision tonight from us.
Well, the decision needs to be, if you're interested enough to pursue it, because Matt's going to have to do some of the, the, the information necessary and I looked up the, what the letter of intent or letter of notification, they call it, needs and it, and it does need some sort of a budget and it needs some sort of a description of what the project is. And so that's going to take a little legwork in order to come up with that, although I think that Doc Doctor would be very helpful with this and, and along those lines, by the way, there is another grant source. I keep on forgetting the name of it. Essentially, there, there's a grant source when you are enhancing, enhancing the boater, boater use of waterways. And, and Jeff from Doc Doctors has helped other communities write that grant. So there's, there could be another source along with this to help with the match from that other grant. And, and he says that those grants sometimes don't even get fully spent because just communities don't apply for them. And so there's, there's really some opportunities here and I just wanted to see whether you want to pursue it.
I say yes.
I think it's fine. I agree that it'd be nice to do the stormwater, but if these grants are a max of a half million dollars, that's not going to touch stormwater. We'll do something for the docks.
And I can, I can help out a little bit from Florida, you know, email, we can email back and forth.
In between St. Grias? In between St. Greas.
Okay, there's one. The other one, another meeting that I went to was with Congressman Welch in Montpelier. The congressman requested that the mayors meet with him. There are only eight mayors in Vermont. And, and the reason for the meeting was to find out from the mayors what infrastructure needs there are. Because Congress, with the new Congress, they are setting their path to creating bills and so on. And one of the big areas that they want to focus on is how can we help America's infrastructure? What kind of grants, what kind of things can we do to help communities? So the congressman wanted to hear from us as to what we thought was necessary. And not surprisingly, many of us had the same things to say about stormwater and wastewater as problems that, that have big price tags and that we should get some federal assistance on. We also talked about how the applications are and how difficult it is and how expensive it is when you try and go for a federal grant because of the requirements. So he took all of that in and I, I think we'll be seeing something coming out of Congress because it's not, it's not a partisan issue. It's actually a bipartisan issue in Congress relative to this infrastructure for the communities in the country. So there was that meeting. Hopefully, we'll see something coming out of that soon. Then, let's see, tomorrow, there is the Virgin's Partnership Blender. We don't like to call it a mixer because the chamber uses mixer and we don't want to get mixed up. So the, the blender is at Lulu's tomorrow from five to seven. You are all cordially invited. There's be some munchies and cash bar and so on, and so please stop by. And also Saturday is Carnaval at the Opera House. It's, doors open at seven, starts at 7:30. It's a fundraiser for the, the principal nonprofits in the city, the Opera House, the partnership, the Bixby Library and the Boys and Girls Club. So the money raised and that, it's the, it's really the, it's just the first thing that we've done that, is it all, no, it's three. Three, three, sorry. Not, not, not the Bixby on this one. But we have been, you know, collaborating in the nonprofits and saying, well, you know, we're trying, always trying to raise money and we're trying to raise it out of the same people. Can we do things together? And so it is important and it has raised a lot of money in the past from this. So if you have a mind to, please come to it.
Time, too.
Huh?
Nice.
Okay. Time machine is the theme. And I guess the last thing that I have to say is, this is my last meeting with the city council. Well, not the last meeting because the last meeting is the annual meeting, but, but the last meeting of the city council and I just want to thank all of you. It's been really a pleasure working with you for, for, at least some of you, for seven years. And this is a good council. I'm glad that you folks are returning. You work well together and I know we certainly don't always agree, but I think there's always been respect for one another and respecting other opinions. And I think you're a pretty smart group, actually. And, and I'm, I'm glad that you will be continuing on with the, the work that needs to be done here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.